Hey Laura, can you hear me? I will be right there, but I'll stay on. I'm in just some traffic downtown. We had Bridge Street School open house today. It's Quaverly.
Okay, oh, now I'm up there. Is everyone... We're recording? Okay. Northampton Open Media, could you give us a countdown? We're going to start. Good evening. Welcome to the September 18th, 2025 Northampton City Council meeting. I'm Alex Jarrett. As City Council President, I'll be presiding this evening along with Vice President Rachel Maori. This meeting and all participating in person and on Zoom will be audio and video recorded. The meeting can also be watched on Comcast Channel 15 or by streaming on Northampton Open Media's YouTube channel. I now call the City Council to order. Could you take the role, please?
Counselor Dobbs.
Here.
Counselor Elkins is not present. Counselor Jarrett.
Here.
Counselor Clemmer.
Here.
Counselor Labarge.
Counselor Maori.
Here.
Counselor Moulton.
Here.
And Counselor Perry, we knew was not going to be able to attend. Counselor Rothenberg.
Here.
Counselor President, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Tonight's highlights include an order laying out and accepting Main Street and other adjoining streets, a zoning ordinance relaxing setback requirements for reuse of historic accessory structures for residential use, and a resolution calling for the City of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Israel and Palestine. First, I have an announcement of a public hearing on 25.313 National Grid Verizon petition to install a new pole and relocate an existing pole on Bridge Road. Per Mass General Law, Chapter 166, Section 22, the Northampton City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, September 30th, 2025, at 6:30 PM in Council Chambers, 212 Main Street, Northampton, on National Grid/Verizon's petition to relocate one jointly owned pole on Bridge Road to accommodate a new driveway at 737 Bridge Road and install one jointly owned new pole to correct an existing overlong span. Next is public comment. If you wish to make a public comment, you can sign up on the sheet at the podium. If you're on Zoom, you can use the Raise Hand feature, and the Raise Hand feature is on the bottom menu bar. You click on React and then Raise Hand. If you were calling in by phone, you can raise your hand by hitting star nine. If you're having trouble raising your virtual hand, you can turn on your video and physically raise your hand. If you want to submit a written public comment, please email it to citycouncil@northhamptonma.gov. It will be sent to all councilors and will be part of the public record. I'm going to alternate between people in the room and people on Zoom. Before you begin, please state your name and your city or town. To ensure everyone has an equal opportunity to speak, the council limits comments to a maximum of two minutes. After two minutes, I will ask you to please finish your sentence. And if someone has already said something you agree with, feel free to second their thought. We do have a maximum time of 90 minutes, so if you are able to use a little less than two minutes, it may allow more people to speak. According to council rules, we do not respond during public comment. It is your time to speak. And our rules also state that councilors and members of the public shall conduct themselves with civility and respect at all times. We do have members with hearing accessibility concerns. So if you do not have the floor and you wish to express yourself, please use motions rather than sound while others are speaking. Please do not interrupt anyone while they are speaking. We will start in the room with Peter Keikos. Oh yeah, make sure that's green.
Time begins now, right?
Correct.
I'm, uh, thank you.
Your name again, sorry.
Peter Keikos Florence, thank you for your service to our community. Also, thank you for passing last year the resolution for a ceasefire in Gaza and also a resumption of the desperately needed aid and also release of hostages on both sides. I thank you again for that. But I'm here tonight to talk about the fact that it's been a year since we have had these conversations and matters have gone from bad to worse. There's no exaggeration to say that the livelihood, the livelihood of 2 million people has been demolished. Demolished, 2 million people. So we ask ourselves Gazans, we ask ourselves, what can we do? Well, there's something we can do locally. And the interfaith community is having a benefit for a school in Gaza which has had to evacuate Gaza City. It's called the Samud school, and there's going to be information about that at an interfaith concert on October 4th, Saturday, at 2:00 PM at the church I belong to, First Churches on Main Street. There'll be lifted up Jewish prayers for peace, Muslim prayers for peace, and Christian prayers for peace. So there is something we can do. Come and donate. It's a free will offering, but the suggested donation is $15 if you have that. If you don't, just come anyway. We're having a professional Arabic ensemble and also Hispanic, Spanish music professionally done. So we hope you can all come and thank you for the time and the time is now to free Palestine.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Maryelle.
Hi, I'm Mayor Berger, and I'm a Jewish constituent in Northampton. And I'm calling because I want the City Council to divest funds from the companies that are fueling genocide in Gaza. Right now, as we speak, there are 900,000 people trapped in Gaza City. Not everyone could evacuate, not everyone had the means, and Israel is just bombing and demolishing everyone in Gaza City, every single apartment complex, every single person. We don't even know how many people are dead at this point because there was a media blackout, an internet blackout. It is so horrific right now. We have to do everything we can, which includes every local action, and divesting from the companies that are involved in prevailing either with AI or with actually producing the weapons could actually be really, could make an impact. And it not only would it help with the divestment, but it might inspire other towns to divest as well. It could really create like a national movement. So this is, this is what we need to be doing at this moment. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next in the room is Veronica. Welcome. Your name and city or town, please.
Veronica Darman, Northampton. I'm here tonight to ask why this resolution is being considered. Northampton, Massachusetts is approximately 5,500 miles away from Israel. And because of a little over $71,000 invested in companies, several councilors deemed to be complicit with human rights violations, there is now a ceremonial gesture to make a statement as a city. But boycotting or divesting from Israeli affiliated iGov is actually not helping anyone affected by the war between Israel and Gaza and applies severe double standards. Because as we all know, while Israel is being accused of human rights abuses, other countries with proven and continued human rights abuses are being ignored. To that, I would ask the Council if BDS proposals have been presented for Sudan, North Korea, Russia, and a whole host of Arab countries surrounding Israel. My guess is probably not. Much like the recent request by members of the River Valley Co-op to stop shelving a handful of Israeli made products, I fear the goal here of this resolution is not to affect the Israeli economy, but to unfairly target the Jewish homeland and its individuals and institutions. In addition, if BDS movements are, the BDS movements are counterproductive to peace because they undermine principles of engagement, tolerance, dialogue, and coexistence needed for a two-state solution, which we all want. And please consider the fact that harming the Israeli economy also hurts tens of thousands of Palestinians who live and work in the country they call home. Finally, I appeal to your sense of duty to all Northampton's children. If this resolution is passing, can you imagine what it says to a child attending a Northampton school who may be Israeli or has Israeli parents? I think it clearly says, "We don't support you and we don't welcome you in this community," and that is not okay with me.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Rivka.
Hi, everybody. My name is Rivka Neesonstweig. I live in Greenfield, Massachusetts. And you'll forgive me that my heart is beating very fast. Speaking in front of a lot of people is a lot for me, especially in the middle of a disaster like the disaster we're living through. I am an Israeli, an Israeli American. I am the grandchild of Holocaust survivors. The City of Northampton passing a resolution that would divest funds from this genocide would be honoring my ancestors, honoring my people.
Please don't make sound during. Sorry about that. Continue.
I would be honoring my ancestors, honoring my people, giving the Jewish people a future, and stopping the endless, unfathomable death and suffering that is going on in Palestine and in Gaza right now. There is a long history of nonviolent resistance that includes boycott, divestment, and sanctions. This is actually a normal thing that people do when the unthinkable is happening and when we have to use any means possible. The only reason that we can't speak openly about this is because my family's trauma, the Holocaust, is used as a shield to stop good people from listening to their hearts and seeing what's right in front of them. It saddens me to no end. It terrifies me to no end. And in the end, it's not about me. It's about the tens of thousands and probably over 100,000 Palestinians who are dead right now and who are suffering. Right now, in Israel, there's basically two camps.
So that was time, if you could finish your sentence?
Sure. There's the camp that believes in genocide, and there's the camp that believes in apartheid. As Americans, we should believe in neither of them, and locally, we should fund neither of them. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Next, next in the room is Anthony.
Welcome. My name is Anthony Fischel. I live in Leeds. I didn't prepare anything, so I apologize if I fumble with my words. This is not the first time that I have stood alone in a room full of brainwashed people. I am the survivor of sexual abuse. I was abused for three years. My parents were in a religious cult, and I was abused by the people in the cult. And my parents, my mom fled that cult when she found out what was going on. I kept it to myself, and the first time I spoke about it was in high school when there was a workshop about rape. And in that workshop, they divided the room up into four corners. And then they said a story about someone going on a date, wearing the wrong clothes, and getting raped. And then they had the people in the room, my classmates, go into the corners. One corner was 50/50, 50% the rapist's fault, 50% the victim's fault. Another corner was 75%, 25%, the other one 25%, 75%. There was one corner that was 0% and 100%. I stood in that corner alone and felt so sad for my classmates. So sad. Did some of them know the right corner? Or were they all... What? I didn't even have the words to understand what was different between me and them. How come I was the only one that can see it?
Thank you.
Check your phone.
Next on Zoom is Jenny.
Hi, I'm a Jewish resident in Northampton. I'm speaking in favor of the divestment resolution coming before council. We are in a dangerous and terrifying moment in history, and I just, first I want to thank Rivka for your words, and I want to acknowledge that there are differences of opinion and identity, and most of those differences, I think, are more nuanced than not when it comes to what we are seeing in Gaza. And the person who spoke before me, I want to, I want to say that as an American, as a North American citizen, I don't conflate my government with the people of this country. So when I stand against what my government is doing, that's not, I don't, I don't see that as harming my neighbors. And I want to, I hope that we can bring the same lens to Israel and separate what the Israeli government is doing from the people of Israel. So when I say that I am in support of the divestment resolution, it is because I am in such deep despair and rage and terror and grief about the tens of thousands of Palestinian civilians that are being killed while sleeping in their beds, while trying to get medical care, while trying to get food for their starving children. So whether you identify as Jewish or not, whether you identify as Zionist or anti-Zionist or conservative or progressive, I imagine that most of us here today oppose this unchecked bloodshed. And so I plead for us to put these small differences aside so that we can stand together against this onslaught of injustice, both here and abroad. And if people want to bring other resolutions to the council, if people want to protest what's happening in Sudan, I am behind that. If people want to protest what's happening.
If that was time, if you could just finish your sentence?
Let us divest from companies that are complicit in human rights violations here and everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Shauna.
My name is Shauna Fischel from Leeds. I'm an Israeli Jew, since we're playing identity politics here. We all want this war to end, but divesting for Israel is ridiculous. Israel is a powerhouse in medical and technological innovation. Almost every scientific medical breakthrough has some Israeli connection. Israel is a global leader in many fields, including the interface between hardware, software, and biology. Your suggestion to divest completely disregards how you, everyone here with a smartphone in their hand, benefits from so much Israel and its citizens has to offer. Divesting hurts the people, all people, the citizens, not the government. All you are doing with these resolutions is dividing this community and sowing seeds of hate. This cumulative effect has essentially three anti-Israel resolutions in the span of one year has surely had subconscious and conscious consequence on the populace of Northampton and creating some degree of anti-Jewish sentiment. I feel it in my bones. Don't pretend this is about your values or the community. These resolutions states you care about human beings? How about the hostages? How about Jews? How about those slaughtered by Hamas? Jews, Muslims, Christians, Bedouins, foreign nationals? How about genocide and targeted ethnic lending in Congo and Sudan? Where is your resolution for that? Or do you just get to pick and choose whose lives are important? Hurt of blood libels? Why not a resolution that aims to end the war and call accountability for Hamas? Why not ask for a return for the hostages held by Hamas? Why not ask for a peaceful government of Gaza? Why the people actually want? Why have you not focused attention on the evil of Hamas against its own people? What has Hamas done for you that you are so powerful, supporting their agenda to eliminate Jews from the river to the sea? I'm wearing a shirt and speaking today for the memory of Shani Look. She was kidnapped, raped, and murdered by Hamas. Remember her.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Alisa. Oh, no, next is on Zoom. Then it'll be your turn.
Say what?
Next is on Zoom, and then it will be your turn. Welcome, Alisa. Your name and city or town.
I'm trying to turn my camera on, but it's not allowing me to do it.
I don't know why that happens for some people. I just asked you to. Permission is given. It's very strange.
Got it. Thank you. Good evening, councilors. My name is Alisa Klein. I live in Leeds in Ward 7. And I'm proud that my city councillor Rachel Maori is one of the sponsors of the divestment resolution that's on your agenda this evening. Thank you to all the sponsors for this crucial resolution. It's very appropriate that this resolution is on the agenda tonight because today begins the four-day global strike for Gaza, a coordinated international action to demand accountability and an end to a brutal, cruel, deliberate, intentional, and carefully orchestrated genocide that is being perpetrated by Israel and fueled with literally billions of US dollars. The US is more than complicit. This country, we, are full partners in the murder of tens of thousands of Palestinians and the starvation of over a million more in a supremacist ethnic cleansing of a people. Our tax dollars, this city's investments, make us partners to this massive crime against. Our tax dollars, this city's investments, make us partners to this massive crime against humanity. Divestment is the only moral stance. Let me be clear, you will be bombarded by Zionist rhetoric that tells you any action to stop this genocide is anti-Semitic. But this action is nothing more than our city's contribution to stopping a genocide. I'm a Jew. I grew up in part in Israel. I'm an Israeli citizen. I served two years of a compulsory service in the Israeli army as a young adult. I have many family members and friends in Israel. So the credentialing that you'll hear from some Zionist Jews, that is, that they get to decide what is anti-Jewish or anti-Semitic, is a red herring. It's a ploy to keep you from embracing a just and necessary action. Please vote immediately on this resolution. I encourage you not to send it to committee. It needs your action, your support, and your yes votes as soon as possible. Palestinians in Gaza can't wait.
Thank you. Next in the room is Libby.
I assume the hostages can wait.
Put your name and city or town.
My name is Libby Batrim, which means my heart, the daughter of life. I want everybody to live, Gazans and my country and my people and the Bebus babies and Shani Look. Where were all you women, all you progressive people when breasts were being sliced off by Hamas? Where were you? Where are you now when we have hostages underground being raped?
Please direct to us.
Tortured and starved. I am just going to say the names of the hostages and I just feel so bad for your souls. Your souls are crying. Alon Ben Edith, 24. Ariel Ben Silvana, 28. Avinatan Ben Ditzatzvia, 32. Bararam Ben Julia, 23. Biben Jassy, 25. David Ben Silvana, 35. Eitan Abraham Ben Estrat, 24. Eitan Ben Ruth Edith, 39. Elkana Ben Ru Chama, 36. They burned babies in ovens. They didn't make this up. We didn't make any of this up. Evyatar Ben Gila. Don't interrupt. You are so brainwashed. I feel so sorry for you all. My heart is in pain.
Please direct to us.
For your souls. I'll look wherever I want to. Evyatar Ben Gila, 25. Gali Ben Talia, 28. And the list goes on. Guy Ben Meriv, 24. Maitan Shachar Ben Ainat, 23. Maitan Bet Aniv, 26. Maxim Ben Tella, 37. Nimrod Ben Viki, 21. Omri Ben Deranika, Estel, 48. Ram Ben Tamal Noah, 21.
That was time if you could finish your sentence?
Sagib Ben Galit, 27. Tamir Ben Heyrut, 21.
So that was time.
Yosef Chaim is my friend. Yosef Chaim Ben Miriam.
Thank you.
Is my friend.
Have to have equal time for everyone.
He's 26 years old.
Sorry.
Zeb Ben Talia is 28.
Thank you.
Seventy-four-year-old Maria is dead, waiting to come home. I'm gonna leave. I can't. I'm so sorry for all of you. I'm so sorry for all of you and all the bullshit you believe. I live in Israel and I'm proud to stand with Israel.
Next on Zoom is Eli.
Hello, my name is Eli Gervich. I'm a resident of Northampton in Ward Two. Um, and I'm, uh, here to ask the city council to pass this resolution to, uh, divest from Israelis' companies and, and Israeli-associated groups that Northampton invests in that supports genocide. I myself am also a Jewish resident of Northampton. And I, I hope, I suppose I just start by saying, I hope the city councillors were listening closely, some of the speakers who previously spoke about, uh, against passing this, uh, resolution. Because I heard in these arguments, um, simply that, uh, I didn't hear any denial of a genocide happening. I didn't hear any denial of Israel committing anything. I simply heard a what-aboutism. Of course, we, it is horrendous what happened on October 7th. And of course, it's, we'd like the hostages to be freed and peace in the region. But the arguments that were previously made were simply what-aboutism. This affects the economy of Israel that supposedly we benefit from. Somehow, the, the hostages and the killing of Israelis justifies the 63,000 or 65,000 dead, uh, including many children in Gaza. There's no denial of that. Somehow, there are, uh, there's an argument to be made that, well, there's other, uh, genocides and issues going on around the world of similar import. That's not a denial that this is a genocide. They're simply saying, well, there's, Israel's committing a genocide and there are these other genocides happening. Why are we focusing on the Israeli one? So I hope they were listening closely, that that's basically the argument being made. Uh, as a Jewish person, I was, uh, educated and it was, uh, brought up as highly important to me to be against any fundamental nationalism and racism that could lead.
That was time if you could finish your sentence?
So I think this is very important because even a small amount of money by, divested by many towns could lead to a large change. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why are you yelling at me? Why is she yelling at me?
Next in the room is Nathan. If you have conversation, please take it out.
People are calling for security.
There's also children in the room, so I don't.
Okay, I think.
Let's continue.
We're going to continue. Nathan, go ahead.
Okay. Hi, uh, my name's Nathan Chung, uh, Northampton resident. I'm gonna shift to some local issues, so I've been coming here very often and, uh, this will be my last public comment in a while, for a while, until things get really bad. So I need to have some fun hobbies. Uh, maybe it's already bad, locally speaking. So there's been some misinformation and political targeting and, uh, that encouraged me to speak up about local issues. So between '22 and '24, in Holyoke, I was interrupted twice by a city councillor during public comment for speaking dissenting opinions. I think unfortunately, uh, Northampton political discourse has sunk just as low and probably even worse, fueled by social media and COVID-19. So I find some people who portray themselves as anti-status quo and anti-elite, uh, local socioeconomic elites, such as, uh, doctors, professors, lawyers, engineers, and wealthy transplants. So they promote people from their own, uh, group with limited government experience over people from lower socioeconomic groups with actual experience. So this is nothing new. I think what we need as a community is removing distractions like Facebook, so we can better educate ourselves and recover the ability to talk to, um, talk in person with others with whom we disagree. And also, we probably need to be a little bit more transparent of our own privileges, you know, like having really expensive homes or coming from, uh, really wealthy families. So I would like to suggest everyone to stay alert, uh, question everybody's intentions and backgrounds, ignoring their self-promotions, and also ask people for, eh, sources of their claims and specific solutions. My blog is at cityuntangle.com/politics and you can find my email at the bottom of the, uh, blog. Thanks. And, uh, if I have a little time, I'm gonna play a little music just to get some tension out.
Thank you.
It's a golden, uh, hit song right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are seats, open seats. I encourage you to not, not block the aisle and come up to these seats. Okay, next, um, on Zoom is Laurel.
Um, hi, I'm Laurel Corangelo and I'm in Ward Three in Northampton. I'd like to, uh, thank, um, Ward Three, um, council member Quaverly, who said she will be voting for, um, the divestment. So thank you. Thank you for the sponsors. And I didn't get to hear the music. We couldn't hear the music over Zoom, but thank you for the music. And, um, I want to second, um, everything that Mariel Berger said, I'm sorry if I'm saying your name wrong, and any, everything that Jenny Bender said. And, um, really want to honor, um, and rise and, um, lift up, um, is what Rivka said. Thank you, Rivka. She's just talking about her, um, her, uh, ancestors were Holocaust survivors and honoring them, um, by honoring the Palestinian people. And, um, so I'm, I'm in favor of us as a small, as a town, doing everything we can and being on the right side of history at this time and, um, making ripples, um, throughout, through other small towns to be able to make a difference. And, and like as Jenny Bender said, you know, there's no reason why we can't have resolutions about other places too, that, the what-aboutism. We can have, you know, that's, that's great. I mean, do we, do we want our tax dollars to go towards starving people and bullets and, um, and weapons? You know, and we see, we don't, do we want that? Are we a community that wants that? I don't think so. And I think, um, we should not, um, we should not give up our opportunity to, um, be on the right side of history. And so thank you, uh, thank you very much. That's, that's, um, my statement.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is Patricia.
Hi, my name is Patricia Rodriguez. Um, I'm from Northampton. I absolutely fully support this resolution calling for divestment from and refrain from future investments in companies with a complicity in violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine, including through their involvement in settlements, walls, and surveillance systems and checkpoints, Israeli bonds, and exploitation of natural resources. The ongoing bombings in Gaza have created an apocalyptic, social, economic, human rights, and humanitarian aid situation that necessitates action from all of us. At the local level, we can help by ending any link to the system that perpetuates brutal bombings, destruction, killings, in the name of territorial control. One of the purposes of this territory control is the extraction of fossil fuels, both to uphold the war machine, but also for profit. I always think about those folks at the frontline of displacement and death, those who try to protect this territory in Gaza and West Bank for the benefit of all people, to restore it, to generate healthy crops. They are land defenders. They fight to expand the possibilities for human dignity in the world who merit our support with this resolution. Each of these actions for many of us matters. It has done, it has been done before and many cities are currently doing it. Please, let's keep doing it together and in the process, calling out those who are responsible for this brutality. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Thomas.
Hi. Hi, uh, my name's Thomas Campbell. I'm a Northampton resident. I'm in Ward Three. A lot of people here can speak much more eloquently to this topic than I can. I just came to show my support for the divestment. I think, much like other cities such as Portland and Dearborn, Michigan, you know, we should join our voices with others who are against this genocide. That's really all I have to say.
Thank you. In the room is John L. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is John Lamplie. I live in Ward Two on Crescent Street and I'm speaking tonight in support of the resolution to divest from entities committing human rights violations in Palestine. I want to thank councillors Dobbs, uh, Maori, and Walton for sponsoring this important resolution. Divestment is serious work, but it is also specific, actionable, and effective. So many of us have asked ourselves for years, at this point, what can I do? Tonight, we begin to consider something concrete. This week, the United Nations has formally concluded what many of us have known for a long time, that the state of Israel is conducting a genocide against the people of Palestine. Countless Palestinian people have been displaced, kidnapped, beaten, tortured, maimed, starved, murdered, and worse, all along purely ethnic and racial lines. This has been done in part through the unconditional positive regard that the state of Israel enjoys with the media and their allies in government, and it has been done through direct financial support from the United States and from investments like some that we currently hold in Northampton. Small as it may seem, resolutions such as the one we consider tonight really do take money away from the war machine, money that we can invest responsibly elsewhere. And they send a clear message that no government can act with total impunity forever, that human rights matter, and that humanity's thirst for peace and justice will prevail. Though Palestine is thousands of miles away from our city, its story and the suffering of its people is immediate and palpable, and it affects all of us. So I ask this council, from my human heart to yours, to remember the people of Palestine. And when the time comes, don't delay, I ask you to vote yes.
Thank you. Nam, uh, we're getting a report that your broadcast is not streaming. Do you want us to take a recess?
Are you talking to me?
No, um, this is to the Northampton Open Media.
We're having a technical problem, so we're just taking a brief moment.
Oh, gotcha.
Do you want us to take a recess? Okay, we're going to take a brief recess while we figure this out and...
Oh, here, let me, let me, um...
Um, we will return at 7:18.
And, and we'll start with you.
Cool. Hey, I'm Nas. What's up?
Nas, okay. Thank you for your patience. Nas, okay. Thank you for your patience.
Oh, sit down.
Good evening. Welcome back to the Northampton City Council. We are resuming a public comment. And next on Zoom is N. Taskin.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Great. So my name is Nathan Taskin, better known as Nas. Up until a month ago, I was a resident of Northampton. Moved to Amherst recently, but I'm still invested in various things going on here. So I was going to start out by saying that I am yet another Jew against genocide. But an earlier speaker said, oh, I guess we're doing identity politics here. And I thought about it, and you know what? They're right. It shouldn't matter if you're Jewish. It shouldn't matter if you're Arab. It shouldn't matter if you're Israeli or whatever. It shouldn't matter what you are, what identity grouping you come from, to be against genocide. All that matters is if you're a human being. And I'm not even going to dispute or argue that it is a genocide because every human rights group worth its salt has said as much, from Amnesty International to Israel's own leading human rights group, BSLM, to say nothing about the Palestinians who have actually experienced the genocide. The lowball estimate that was cited so often, 40,000, we know that's not true. We know it's as high as half a million. Does that mean nothing? So the question becomes, I want to tip my hat to Moulton, Mayore and Dubs, thank all the organizers gathered here today. And I want to specifically address my comments to councilors, two of them are not here today unfortunately, Elkins and Perry, but also Clemmer and Rothenberg. Now, what do the four of you have in common, besides the fact that you all seem to hate each other? Last November, Dubs, I believe it was Dubs, passed a motion for a ceasefire resolution. Now, by all accounts, it was a largely symbolic gesture. This apartheid divestment seems to have a bit more substantive to it. But what did the four of you decide to do? You decided to abstain. You decided to stay neutral. Neutral on a genocide. And Rothenberg, I hear that your stance has changed since then, but the facts remains. In November, a year into the genocide, you stayed out of it. You didn't want to take a stance. Why?
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
Neutrality in the side of oppression sides with the oppressor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Eve.
Hi, everyone. My name is Eve. I live in Northampton, Ward Three. And not only do I very strongly support the passage of the resolution to divest from human rights abuses in Palestine, but I've been working very actively on this initiative for over a year. And one thing that's been really important to those of us who've been organizing around getting this divestment initiative passed is community outreach. So we've been going out to farmers markets every week. We, just this past week, we're at Taste of Northampton, both days. It's been a real strong value of our work that we want to hear what our community is saying about this and get the perspectives of people, not just who are going to show up to a room like this or who are part of our activist groups, but who are just everyday people of Northampton. And I was nervous about this. I was nervous about going out and talking to people about an issue that I know can be controversial and can be heated. But what I actually found, I was so surprised, was that nearly, almost universally, everybody we talked to at the farmers markets, around town, at events, is deeply in support of the shared values that underpin this resolution, which are justice, freedom, dignity and equality for all people. And that the investments of our city, where we're putting our tax dollars, should align with these values. And so, so, so many people agreed. Israelis, Jews, Palestinians, old, young, parents, children. It was really, really inspiring to me, talking to all these people. And the resolution is really in large part a product of all of that feedback and a lot of that community input. And so I just really want to underpin that this is about, this is about equality, it's about justice, it's about collective liberation. And it was really meaningful to go out and do this organizing and know that my community shares those values and wants our finances to align with that.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Chloe.
Hi, can you hear me from the car?
Yes.
Great, thank you. I am joining my voice with others, or I should say where I'm from first.
Your name and city and town.
Yes. My name is, I'm a current resident of Greenfield, but I lived in Northampton for several years. I'm coming to this meeting as a local trauma therapist, a proud Jew and a descendant of Holocaust survivors, while we're playing a game, voicing my definitive support for the Northampton divestment resolution. It's not in spite of, but because of my Jewish ancestry that I moved to support this resolution. One core Jewish value that was instilled in me from a young age is that of tikkun olam, or repairing the world. As more and more humanitarian groups condemn the Israeli government's treatment of Palestinians as one of apartheid, as our current federal government greenlights and funds the Israeli war machine, and as a full-fledged ground invasion of Gaza City has just begun, I feel it's our responsibility to take local action against these horrors. Divesting our city's funds from the most egregious companies, enabling this unspeakable violence, is a step in the right direction. And I urge all city council members to use their best judgment and conscious in voting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, in the room is Ella.
Hi, I'm Ella. I live on Orchard Street in Ward Three. And I'm so grateful to be here today because our city has this amazing chance to take action towards ending a genocide. And I want to thank our sponsors so much of this resolution. Northampton is deeply connected to Palestine from our Palestinian community members to all of our hearts here today, as people have spoken about, and unfortunately, to our finances as well. Israel could not drop bombs on Palestinian civilians without buying them from companies like Raytheon and GE Aerospace. Israel could not expand illegal settlements in occupied Palestinian territory without funding from the First International Bank of Israel and cement from companies like Heidelberg Materials. Northampton tax dollars are invested in each one of these companies. Divestment is one of the most powerful tools that we have to undercut the forces that enable and profit from this genocide. And we have a proud history of using that power from the finance, from removing our financial complicity in climate chaos many years ago by divesting from fossil fuels. And I want to echo what Eve said about all of our outreach showing that Northampton residents believe in that peace, justice and freedom for all people. And I really hope that you will take this opportunity to enact those values of our city by passing this. There will certainly be questions on financial implementation, but as with the fossil fuel resolution, I hope you will act with the urgency that's needed to pass this value statement and take advantage of the suggested two-year implementation process to figure out the best way to enact it into policy. Now is a really important time to take urgent action. And thank you so much for considering this.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Emma.
Hi, good evening. My name's Emma Noyes. I live in Ward Two in Northampton. As a taxpayer living in this city, I've been horrified to learn that Northampton is invested in companies like RTX, the world's second largest military company, which manufactures weapons used by the Israeli military to brutalize and massacre Palestinians. I'm encouraging councilors to support the divestment resolution because investing in companies like RTX is not only morally corrupt, it is in complete misalignment with the values of Northampton, as others have said tonight. Our city's own website states that this is paradise city with a lively, caring community where people from all walks of life feel welcome. I and many others want to live in a paradise that does not support profiting off of apartheid, illegal settlements and other violations of international law. Thanks for your time.
Thank you. In the room is Karen. Karen?
My name is Karen and I live in Ward One of Northampton. My great pleasure to have lived here for 46 years. Help me. No, I love it. I am going to come at this, the, my support for this proposition from a different angle. I would like to talk about how it's important, not just why it's important. The why has been covered very well. I'm taking an international historic perspective on this. I'm going to just throw out two examples. One was Algeria, which was a colony of France for 130 years. It was a colonial settalist situation where the indigenous population was repressed, exterminated if it didn't cooperate. Just to give you an illustration of how bad it was in 1962, when Algeria finally got its liberation as a country from, from France, only 10% of its population was literate. That's how repressive it was. A similar example is, is the apartheid system in South Africa. And it too had a very repressive system for the indigenous population. In both of these cases, there were military operations where the locals tried to fight back. And they did commit some atrocities. They did some things that they had to account for later. But what they did was basically bring attention to the problem. And that, I think, is what the situation in Israel-Palestine is like when you have any kind of Palestinian opposition. Now, how, how bad it is in terms of nastiness, or even if it's just civil disobedience, it is considered a crime against the Israeli system. In both of the cases of Algeria and, and South Africa, they got their liberation. How? They got it because of international pressure. They couldn't change it fully from inside, so they got it through international pressure. Where did that pressure come from? It came through moral pressure, building political pressure and building economic pressure.
Thank you.
Yes, what you're doing here is part of that latter category. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Ace.
Good evening. Ace Taylor, Ward Three, Northampton. I am speaking to you remotely because I have just got my COVID shot and it's a little hmm. But I would encourage everyone to go and get theirs while they still can because this is far better than catching it and spreading it to someone else. I want to echo my support for the resolution in divestment. I think everyone here has said all that I wanted to say on that and wanted to particularly issue Nas's request that those who abstained previously will vote in favor this time. Secondly, I would like to point out a logistical issue with the Public Hearing 25313. The two linked documents appear to be identical. I believe the DPW resolution is missing. And if that could be corrected in the agenda, I would appreciate it. Finally, I would like to thank everyone who turned out for the preliminary elections this year. There was a nearly 30% turnout across all of Northampton, which is extremely impressive. And I hope for the election proper, we get to 50%. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in the room is Lois. Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Lois Ahrens. I've been a resident of Ward 1, actually, for 45 years. I want to thank the councillors, Maori, Moulton, and Dubs for sponsoring this. I was going to talk about the genocide in Gaza and the daily killing and starvation. Instead, I was thinking back on campaigns to divest in apartheid South Africa, which began here. Hampshire College was the first college in the country to divest in 1977. I don't know if Councilor Moulton was part of that back then or not. It was followed by UMass, the first university in the country to divest. I was part of the community divestment campaign that was led by Francis Crowe and Michael Holright here. Everyone said that what we were doing was symbolic, and it wouldn't matter. And they were wrong. In 1980, Francis Crowe and Randy Keeler had an idea to have city councils and town meetings call for a freeze on nuclear weapons. By 1982, 1 million people were in Central Park calling for the nuclear freeze. The freeze campaign spread throughout the country. The movement didn't achieve a complete freeze, but it did shift public opinion, and it did hasten the end of the nuclear arms race. Boston, we're told, is the cradle of liberty. I suggest that Northampton is the cradle of people's campaigns. Let's build on Northampton's legacy and divest in the banks and the arms manufacturers like Raytheon that are slaughtering men, women, and children in Gaza. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Ellen.
I want to, Ellen Mosin James, Northampton resident, a Jewish grandmother who lost two Jewish grandparents and other relatives in the Holocaust. And I'm speaking in support of the divestment resolution. I want to particularly thank the previous speaker for her review of the historical commitment from Northampton on similar questions. I find that very inspiring and encouraging, and hope we can do the same here. It's, I very much believe that "never again for anyone" is an important, is a most important slogan to remember these days, and to stand up for that in Gaza and the West Bank and all over the Middle East, and not be silent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Laura. And we had a report that was hard for people to hear, so if you could speak close to the microphone, that would be nice.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Laura Belushi, Ward 4, Northampton, of course. I wish to thank the council people who proposed this resolution, which I strongly support and urge the others to support. Also, thank you for the councillors who were kind enough to respond to my email for this. I'm a member, I've been here before. I'm a member of DeMille, and I've been here in opposition to L3 Harris many times. I am here tonight. I am also a member of River Valley for Palestine. And part of River Valley, what we do is to support the Samud school in Gaza City. They have been bombed out. We don't know right now if the headmistress, Enam, is alive or where the children are. They are being moved. What I want to, I want to say that Fodella is Samud. And Samud means steadfastness and resilience. Makes me think of, you know, Senator saying, "We persevere." But I just want to say a moment, while I have a public voice, I am really, I'm an activist, and I'm sick of people coming up to me making excuses for Israel by saying, in part, "Well, you know, there are horrible things going on in Sudan, and somebody listed them all." And they're right. And even the people who are sitting here, you know, there are horrible things going on all over the world. My answer is, everybody has one voice. For the love of God, speak up. Find a cause that you can get behind. But don't blame me because I'm speaking up for Israel.
Thank you.
There's a lot to go around. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Shelley.
Good evening. Shelley Berkowitz, Northampton. I'll try not to repeat some of the eloquent comments that were made by others here tonight. So I am a Jewish first-generation American. Both my mother and my father survived torture and starvation and Auschwitz, after which both of their families, almost all of their families were murdered. So I never had grandparents or uncles or aunts. They were either shot, gassed in the Holocaust. Now, that background made me initially feel safer knowing that Israel existed, but it also made me exquisitely hypersensitive to any genocide, which the massive horrors being perpetrated on innocent Palestinian civilians by the fascist Israeli state in Gaza and West Bank is, no question. The Holocaust should never be used as a justification for prior victims to become current oppressors. The US government is not only complicit with this genocide, but our tax dollars, as people mentioned, are providing the funding for the corporations that actually produce the bombs that are dropped in Gaza. Out of respect for one person who is very emotionally talking about Israeli businesses, I have relatives there that run a grocery store. We're not talking about divesting from small businesses. I also have a great-great-grandfather, I forget how many greats, who was the founder of the Ha'poel Mizrahi movement. So I come from a very, very diverse background and shed it. Our progressive Northampton holds $70,000 plus in investments in Israeli state bank, Raytheon GE, as someone said. That makes Northampton clearly complicit. It's symbolic if you don't think $70,000 means something, complicit in genocide. Also, at 50 Prince Street in Northampton, we have L3 Harris, the sixth-largest United States weapons manufacturer, making vital parts for nuclear weapons and missiles that are dropped in Gaza. I guess it's okay, right? They pay taxes in Northampton, after all. And the pastor gave them tax breaks.
That was time, if you could just finish your sentence.
Yes. So I know that has no relationship, but disgusts me. My final comment. Please pass this. I appreciate your courage in bringing it up. Divest from genocide. Maybe this will help counter the cowardice of Mayor Skiaras flying the flag at half-mast to honor a white supremacist. Thank you.
Next in the room is Kayla. Next in the room is Kayla. Kayla?
Hi, my name is Kayla Goldstein. I'm in Ward 4. There are a lot of things that I could say that many people have already said, so I'll keep it brief so more people can speak. I'm another Jew in the room in favor of resolution to divest from companies involved in human rights abuses in Palestine. Ending cycles of violence means extracting ourselves from them and ending impunity for genocide and cutting off funds. And this is a local issue. The only reason this genocide is continuing is because of investment from the US at all levels of government, including local. So stop enabling genocide with our dollars. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Susan.
Hi there. I want to, first of all, really appreciate-
Your name and city or town, please.
And I'm Susan Tiberish from Florence. And I really appreciate the comments that people have made so far. They've been very moving and articulate. And I also want to, along with appreciating our city council folks around the resolution, the organizers have done an amazing job, and I wanted to appreciate them as well. And I just want to speak briefly because so much has been said. But listening to the conversation tonight has really, once again, made me think about trauma. And I've spoken here before about my father, and I think this is extremely relevant. My father is a Jewish POW of World War II. He was a Jew in a Nazi-prisoned war camp. And I can tell you that that has shaped my life. The longer I live, the more deeply I see how it's shaped my life. And I guess we all have different ways that we deal with trauma. But I was born into that unspoken trauma. And it's really, for me, it's been an exploration about what does one learn and how does one live, knowing that trauma from the time I was born. It was all around me. And I could really feel that trauma tonight, hearing some of the voices, the anger and the rage. It really struck me. And sitting here, I mean, to me, it's one more example of war and violence and dehumanization. It has such a corrosive effect on the children. And I think of all the children in Palestine, those who survive. How is this trauma going to shape their lives? And the madness has got to end. It's got to end. You can see the torture and the suffering of people that, when we turn our trauma into rage and anger, it's so painful. And so-
Thank you, Susan. If you could just finish your sentence. Thank you.
And that's all. Thank you so much for everybody's taking the time tonight and sharing in such a heartfelt way.
Thank you. Next in the room is Noah.
Hi, my name is Noah Jefferson. I live in Northampton in Ward 4 on South Street. Like many others here, I'm a proud Jew here to urge you to vote yes on the resolution, calling for the city of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Israel and Palestine. The moral stakes of this issue could not be higher or clearer. We've all witnessed 23 months of genocide waged against the Palestinian people, on top of decades of ethnic cleansing, occupation, and apartheid. There's no ambiguity here as to whether divestment is the right thing to do or what the right side of history will be. As American taxpayers, we are complicit in Israel's violations of human rights and international law, and we therefore have an urgent moral obligation to take every possible action to divest from that complicity. The people of Northampton do not want our tax dollars supporting companies that profit from settlements, natural resource exploitation, walls and checkpoints, weapons, and discrimination. Our city's finances should align with the values of our community. I hope you will take this opportunity to be on the right side of history by supporting this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Joshua.
Hi, my name is Joshua Miller, and I live in, I can't put my video on because the host has disabled it, just so people know.
Okay, hold on. I've asked you to start. I have no idea why it does that because it is enabled, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it. I live in Northampton in Ward 4. I've lived here for 40 years. And I want to thank everybody who spoke tonight and say that I really appreciate that the councillors who brought forward this motion have done so, and I support you very strongly. I also want to say I've heard the people who have spoken against the motion, and the anguish, the anger, and the fear that I feel has been expressed. Like every Jew who is alive, we probably can trace our ancestors who were murdered during the Jewish Holocaust. And I think that shaped my career, which was to become a professor of social work at Smith, focusing on racism, armed conflict, ethnic cleansing, apartheid, and genocide. It pains me greatly that a Jewish state is committing genocide, but it is. And I think it's really important that, to notice that it's not true of all Israelis. In fact, maybe even the majority are appalled by what's going on. The same is true for Americans who are appalled by what's going on politically in this country. Under the bankrupt and morally compromised leadership of Netanyahu and Trump, this genocide continues unabated. I applaud the city council for trying to do whatever it can, however small, to respond to this moral stain by taking an admirable moral position. So thank you, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Next is Mel. Welcome.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Mel. I'm an East Hampton resident. Like many, I'm a Jewish person with ancestors who were brutally murdered in the Holocaust. Many here have connected Northampton's investment in companies that fund Israeli genocide, have connected all of that together. And I would also like to expand that further and make the statement that the US is actually profiting off of this genocide, and that's partly why it's happening. And that is what we need to disconnect right now. Some L3 Harris, some folks who've been protesting L3 Harris for a long time are here. We all know that L3 Harris specifically has boasted about how they have profited off of this genocide. I also just want to say how grateful I am for the organizers of this really important resolution and for the councillors who have put a lot of work into forming it. This is just the beginning of a really difficult process. I really hope that people in this room continue to pay attention as this resolution is hopefully passed, but also put into action. And the bravery and the dedication is going to be needed to put into action with fidelity to make sure that this actually has the impact we want it to have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Jordi.
Hey, I'm Jordi Rosenberg. I'm a 20-year resident of the area and a 10-plus-year resident of Northampton. I'm here to speak in favor of the resolution to divest from companies complicit in the genocide and ethnic cleansing of the Palestinian people. People have spoken very eloquently, so I'm going to try not to repeat. We're gathered here for a very simple reason. We are here because there is a genocide, and we are here to discuss whether or not we will respond to a call issued to the international community by Palestinian civil society, the most oppressed constituents in that genocide. That call is the call to boycott, divest from, and sanction institutions that are complicit in the genocide and ethnic cleansing of Palestinian people. This call for BDS is something that is asked of us, yes, but it is also something that has been given to us. It is a way for us to act in international solidarity when the forces that are in power feel colossal and unmovable. And they would be. If it was just us, the city of Northampton, against a rogue, nuclear-armed state conducting ethnic cleansing, the forces would be colossal and unmovable. But BDS works, and we are not alone. BDS works and is meaningful because we do it together. And each little step we take in solidarity is part of a huge international movement of solidarity. We should join this movement, and we can. That's it. We can decide we here know better about how we should respond or not to the genocide of the Palestinian people, or we- of the Palestinian people, or we can honor the call for solidarity that people living under impossibly severe conditions have made to us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Adrienne.
Hello, thank you. My name is Adrienne, and I live in Greenfield. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I encourage the council to support the divestment resolution. You can be an example and a leader for the rest of the Valley. Genocide and apartheid are crimes, and we have a moral obligation to oppose them at any opportunity. Thank you, and free Palestine.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Deborah.
Hi, I apologize that my camera--I'm not going to turn it on because my Zoom has been weak, and that'll make you not be able to hear me. So hi, my name's Deborah. I live in South Deerfield, have various relationships with Northampton. I really want to thank the sponsors and the organizers and everyone here tonight. I'm speaking in favor of the divestment resolution. I especially want to thank Jordi for reminding us about the call for BDS and also Adrienne for mentioning that Northampton has the chance to be an example to the rest of the Valley. As a Jewish kid, learning about the Holocaust, I was never really interested in Hitler and the Nazis. What I wanted to understand was what everyday people were doing. Everyone who, perhaps not as much as we have with the genocide livestreamed on our phones, but those who knew, like us, and those who woke up every day aware that other human beings were being starved and murdered even as they poured their orange juice and weed at their gardens, what did they do? The council has the chance to do something concrete, and as folks have already said tonight, to be on the right side of history. Additionally, we have the chance to inspire other towns and cities to do the same and to join the thousands around the world that already have. Each of us is a drop. Each of these actions is a drop in the bucket that adds up to a wave. And I also want to lift up the part of the proposed resolution that ensures that future investments are also aligned with Northampton's values. Just as the climate divestment in 2013 impacted the city's financial decisions then, it still impacts them today, and I hope this will do the same. I'll just close with the words of Francesca Albanis, the U.N. Special Rapporteur, who recently said, relinquishing an inch of our privilege is so that an entire people do not have to lose everything. Disrupt, strike, boycott, speak out. This is Northampton's chance to join that chorus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Aiko. Is that the correct pronunciation?
Hello, my name is Aiko Day, and I live in Northampton. I'm also speaking in support of the resolution, calling for the city of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Palestine. I don't want to repeat what everyone else has said so eloquently, but I do want to just remind everyone that, to date, Israel has killed well over 65,000 people in Gaza, among whom 19,000 are children. And while it is true that there are other atrocities and wars occurring around the world, the distinction of this genocide is that it has the full financial support of the U.S. government and, actually, most Western democracies. I also want to just add that the violence is not contained within Gaza. Israel settlers and military have also escalated attacks on Palestinians in the occupied West Bank, killing over 1,000 Palestinians and injuring over 7,000. So I think that it's really critical that we divest for three reasons. Divestment sends a really strong message to political leaders and corporations that our city refuses to be complicit in genocide. Secondly, since we obviously cannot rely on the federal government, it's really important for us to take local action. And finally, this resolution will also prevent the city from purchasing additional stocks and bonds in these entities going forward. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Maria.
Good evening. Okay, I guess the video has been disabled. Wait a minute.
I just asked you to start it.
Thank you so much. My name is Maria Yorokoplo. My husband Nico, we're residents here fairly recent, around four years, in Northampton. But we've been in Amherst when I came as a transfer student in 1980. So we have--and my husband was the owner of El Greco Island Mikros Greek Restaurant, where we tried to promote Mediterranean and Middle Eastern culture. I won't speak to coming from a line of genocide survivors, including 1915 and 1922, former Ottoman Empire, Cyprus 1974. But my clear memory, which during the First Intifada, as a Greek Orthodox Christian, I was in East Jerusalem and--well, West Jerusalem and the West Bank. And even though things were hard then, I could walk as a woman at 11 o'clock to go to the Church of the Holy Sepulchre, which is where the tomb of Jesus is, and have all-night services, people coming from all over the world, including Cyprus, from 11 until 4:00 in the morning, with no one really bothering us, either Muslims or Jews. And that's not possible today. Our churches are set on fire. Our priests are abused. The Christian pilgrims are abused. Forty-eight pre-Palestine, 80% of Palestine was Christian. You're down to around 7%. And as our patriarch who just came, Bartholomew, from Istanbul, those will disappear, and we will be the museum pieces. Our patriarch in Jerusalem, which represents the native Palestinian Orthodox community, which goes back to the time of Jesus, has gone to Gaza with the Latin patriarch, which is native Palestinians, and has said that the staff will not leave, the churches will not leave, we will not abandon Gaza. And please have the world do something. And Northampton is doing something. And please vote for this resolution. I'm old enough to remember South Africa, Northern Ireland, but I was young enough at the time, I was in the Department of African-American Studies, where everything was against us. It'll never happen.
Now it's time, if you could finish your sentence.
Yes. And this has been the hardest for me because when I look at pictures of Palestinians and Jews, we have mixed families, and it's like seeing our families. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Billy.
Hi, my name is Billy. I live in Greenfield, and I don't really have anything new to say. I just want to express my support for Northampton's divestment from corporations that are involved in upholding illegal and inhumane occupation in Palestine. And I support this because I'm a Jew, and I care about the dignity and safety of all people. And I know that each of our well-being is interdependently connected with each other's well-being, and we must take care of each other by divesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Cal.
Hello, I'm Callum from Ward Three in Northampton. I want to express my support for the resolution, calling to divest and urge people to vote yes. I cannot speak as eloquently as many here, but I do believe it's my duty as a citizen of the city to speak out against how my tax dollars are being used and what my city is being invested in. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Mark? Or is it Mayor?
Oh, I think Mark left.
Okay. Then Dorothea?
Hi, my name is Dorothea Melnikov. Wait a minute. I too, I'm a Jewish RN. I'm living in Greenfield. I have family and friends in Northampton. In terms of my ancestors, my grandmother escaped the pogroms. My father fought against fascism in Spain and in England against Nazism. And today, I stand in an act of solidarity with all those who believe in equality and justice for all. Palestine is the plumb line by which we weigh our humanity. I want to thank you, the sponsors of this urgently needed resolution. I hope to see it written into law as quickly as possible. I agree with so many others who have said it's simple. It's a simple decision. Do we invest in the war industry with such companies, RTX, or in a peace economy, starting with BDS? And I speak today in full support of the divest resolution. I also want to second Rivka's comments. It spoke to my heart about our ancestors, which I just shared a little with you. This is not a war. It is a mass slaughter of civilians and has been identified by many authorities, including the U.N. and Amnesty International, as a genocide. I am thankful that we have arrived here today to say no for us and our neighbors, no for people doing business in our community, to support genocide, apartheid, and a war economy. This is the very least we can do as human beings to take responsibility and act against the profiteers of war and their agenda. Let's start by investing in life. On this, we will all prosper. Thank you for a vote to divest and to continue our effort to cut ties with L3 Harris. Free Palestine. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Kristen.
Hi, Kristen LD, Northampton, Ward Seven. I, a non-Jew, non-Palestinian, am speaking today to express my belief that our city should invest in people, companies, entities that endorse values of universal human rights and not in those that defile those values. To quote a dear friend, a dear local friend who is Jewish and as others tonight have spoken about, I hope Northham can broaden this resolution and divest from entities complicit in human rights violations everywhere. But if we need to start somewhere, Israel-Palestine is an urgent place to start. I second everything that Rivka, that Jenny, that Alyssa, and Laurel, and Ace, and Lois, and Josh, and many others have said tonight in support of divestment from companies that continue to materially support the genocide in Gaza and the Israeli government's ongoing human rights abuses and violations of international law. Thank you, councilors Mayory, Dobbs, and Moulton, for bringing this resolution forward. And thanks to the rest of you, please, for voting for Palestinian human rights and dignity and on the right side of history. Let's invest in a peace economy, as the last speaker said. Thanks.
Thank you. Next in the room is Hannah B.
Hi. Hannah, Northampton. I've told you that before. I've been here many times. I am the grandchild of Holocaust survivors and the great-grandchild of Armenian genocide survivors. I've told you that before. I grew up steeped in that dark puddle of trauma, and I've told you that before. I want to start by saying that I'm so proud of and grateful for the organizers that have worked tirelessly to get this proposal to where it is tonight and to the three councilors sponsoring the proposal. Thank you. I wish that we could read you tonight the names of the hundreds of thousands of innocent Palestinians who have been slaughtered, who have starved to death, and who have died crushed under the rubble, but we would be here for unending days. Divestment is a local issue. Our investment in this genocide is a hyper-local issue. Our tax money is invested in corporations responsible for massacring, per our most informed estimates, 680,000 people, including more than 300,000 children. Someone earlier asked if we could imagine how a Northampton child might feel if we divest from the Israeli perpetrated, U.S.-backed genocide. Can you imagine how children, including children here tonight, will feel as they grow up, understand these horrors, know their city could have done something to stop it and didn't? That Northampton had the opportunity to contribute in saving, even in "small part", hundreds of thousands of children just like them and didn't? Can we, as a city that purports to value equity, community, safety, and inclusion, afford not to divest? When the writing appeared on the wall regarding climate change, this council acted by passing a fossil fuel divestment resolution. Will you stand up now and act or continue to live in complicity? Our community has spoken, and the choice is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. Next on Zoom is Amy.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I want to say that to those speaking against the resolution out of concern for Israel and Israelis, please don't. I hear you, but please don't think dichotomously. And I want to thank the sponsors of the resolution. I want to thank all who have spoken before me, and I want everyone to hear these words from Hillel. If I am not for myself, who will be? If I am for myself only, what am I? If not now, when? And that's why I'm in favor of the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. In the room, Kobe.
My name is Kobe Leff. I'm a Greenfield resident. I do a lot of business and spend a lot of time here in Northampton. Thank you to the councilors who brought this resolution. Thank you to all of the community supporting this. It is very moving to see the needle move towards peace so much, but it is also heartbreaking that it has taken two years of genocide for us to get to this level of a majority in a room. I'm tired of speaking at these, but I will keep doing so until there is peace because we desperately need it. I am a Jew. I went to the same high school as Benjamin Netanyahu in Philadelphia. My grandfather helped. My grandfather helped found the Israeli Navy and left Israel after a year, realizing that he had been tricked and was part of an ethnic cleansing project. I never returned. But I like to think it's not because of my Judaism that I stand for this. I like to think it's because of my humanity. But I've been told by countless people over the last two years that it doesn't matter to them. It doesn't matter to us here in Northampton or in the Valley. It doesn't matter to people who aren't Jews and Palestinians. This is just an issue happening elsewhere. And I think that's sick, and I hate to humor it, but for those of you who might feel that way, I want to remind you, as others have pointed out, that we are interdependent. And as Nora Eriksen said, the Palestinian scholar, genocide is suicide. We, by endorsing and being complicit in this genocide, are putting everyone in this room, everyone in this city, at risk. What's happening in Palestine in some horrifying ways, in which I think many of us have had our eyes opened for the first time over the last couple of years, is not unique in world history, and it's not unique in the present moment. But what makes it unique is the fact that it is being livestreamed and so visibly supported. And so the fascists that run Israel and the fascists that run the U.S. are testing us to see if we're okay with that. And so far, we've told them yes. And when they come for our gay little city, what will we? We need to tell them it is time to draw a line and tell-
That was time. If you could finish your sentence.
Thank you. Please support this resolution.
Thank you. Okay, next on Zoom is JM.
Hi, thank you. I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but I feel compelled. Under the guise of social justice, the council and many testifiers are propping up Hamas. You're not helping Palestinians at all. Israel is fighting for its very survival. I recommend that everyone read Bernard Henri Levy's Israel Alone book, and he's an expert on actual genocide and all kinds of troubles around the world to deepen your understanding about the history and the facts in Israel. Do not support Hamas and Hezbollah, who want to destroy LGBTQ people, women's autonomy, and the values of a healthy and diverse democracy. You're very much on the wrong side of history. Hamas could have ended the war, they started at any moment, by returning the hostages. They do not care about their own people, so they are the ones starving Palestinians and using them mercilessly as they enjoy the world stage. This resolution is wrong-headed to the nth degree. And despite the identity of many of the testifiers, I strongly believe this is hatred against Jews. Thank you.
Thank you. Next in the room is Heather.
Hello, everyone. My name is Heather Hutchinson, and I'm a resident of Leverett. And I'm deeply grateful for the opportunity to speak here in town. I'm here today in support of the Northampton Divestment Initiative, which I believe is visionary and has the capacity to be a catalyst, excuse me, a catalyst here in town to launch real change through actual implementation of a divestment strategy and also a catalyst in other towns like Leverett, like Hadley, like Amherst, because you all, once again, can be at the forefront of this type of change and standing for values against genocide and against human rights abuses. I came as an extended community member to support publicly denouncing the actions of a genocidal regime and sharing a truth about omnicide of the entire Palestinian population and all of the systems that support an indigenous people's survival. This resolution is a lifeline that the Council of Northampton and the community can offer. It commits us to the shared values we uphold, that killing and starving children is wrong, that the massive expenditures of our tax dollars to invest in a foreign entity's economy of war, surveillance, incarceration, and apartheid is just wrong, and that supporting a resolution now, in this moment, where every day, children, their mothers and fathers succumb to illness, starvation, and death by an engineered Holocaust, brings us a step closer to dismantling a racist, violent, unethical system and culture that seems to have lost touch with its own humanity. If we resolve to take action with a resolution today, it will be concrete steps to actually implement real change and tangible action to divest the city's holdings tomorrow. Thank you.
Next on Zoom is Ella.
Hi, my name is Ella Condon. I'm a resident of Greenfield, but I spend a lot of time working and just being in Northampton in general. I want to support, voice my support for this resolution, the divestment resolution. And I want to thank the organizers of this resolution, and I want to thank all of the community members who have shown their support for this resolution. It's given me the hope that I needed this week, and my wish is for Northampton City Council to continue sustaining that hope. Thank you.
Thank you. Next and last is Karen.
Karen Baker, Ward 4. It's hard for me to imagine that explanation of why we should divest should be needed at this point, after all these many months, several years. Hopefully, it's not by now, but I will mention a few reasons. Constantly increasing number of experts concluding that it's genocide. Many have been mentioned already, organizations. I'll add one, the International Association of Genocide Scholars. Even if you don't see it as genocide, I don't understand how people don't see it as a whole mass of war crimes. Starvation is a weapon of war. Again, with experts, famine has been declared, special level of starvation. Constant, constant displacement. You hear more and more doctors in Gaza identifying a pattern, a pattern of single gunshot wounds to the head and chest of children. The implication, I think, is clear: not accidental. Intentional targeted demolition of housing, over and over. At the moment, you keep hearing about high-rise apartment buildings being taken down. Regular statements by Israeli government officials talking about how Palestinians should leave, how that area is part of Greater Israel, et cetera. Recent creation of a corridor of settlements, new corridor has been accepted through the middle of the West Bank, as if the West Bank already wasn't divided up enough, and so on. The reasons, I think, are obvious. They're overwhelming. And somebody said this earlier, it's already too late. It is so late. So many people have died. We can't waste any more time. We have to divest. Let's do what we can to lessen our complicity. Divest Northampton. That's what we can do. Divest from genocide.
Thank you, everyone. I know there were many people who wanted to speak who couldn't. And come on September 30. We're going to take an eight-minute recess. We will come back at 8:27. Eight-minute recess back at 8:27, if you didn't catch it.
Okay, sorry about that. If you want to restart your comments, may I work all of it up?
Okay, thanks. So this Saturday is the Doosie Do Parade, which is hosted by Northampton Neighbors. So it's this Saturday, September 20th, stepping off at 11:00 a.m. at 33 Holly Street, and then marching to Pulaski Park. And new this year is a pop, there will be pop-up performances in food and art all around downtown celebrating the Doosie Do. So everybody come out and doosie do. And then the following weekend, so that's September 26th, Friday, September 26th, and Saturday, September 27th, is Jazz Fest. So you can get tickets and see the lineup at Jazz Fest at northhamptonjazzfest.org. Thanks.
Thank you. Counselor Clemmer.
Thank you. The Community Resources Meeting that was supposed to be this past Monday, the 16th, has been rescheduled till September 24th from 5:00 to 6:30. And it will be in the second-floor hearing room, virtually and in person. And it's going to be a joint meeting with the Housing, Northampton Housing Partnership and Community Resources Committee. And the topic is, we invited housing developers and professionals, and we'll discuss current trends in the housing market that are contributing to the high cost of construction, from financing to regulatory and energy requirements, and creating impediments to getting housing built. We'll look at what implications that has for affordability in Northampton and beyond. And we have a great panel that will speak, and it will be co-hosted with Gwen Nabad. She's the Chair of the Northampton Housing Partnership, and myself.
Thank you. Counselor Maori, then Counselor Dubs.
Okay, so I guess this Sunday is a celebration of clean energy at Smith Vocational High School, 80 Locust Street, 1 to 4. It's the celebration of a global day of action, celebrating the unstoppable rise of clean energy. They'll be celebrating and showcasing the ways Northampton and East Hampton, and cities and towns along the Connecticut River Valley, are using solar and wind energy sources to power our lives without pollution. So I believe that Senator Comerford will be speaking, and the Cappa Director from Northampton. There's going to be breakout sessions, and I think it'll just be very, it's just going to be a super positive event. So if you need a lift that doesn't pollute, show up on Sunday, Smith Vogue, 1 to 4. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dubs.
Thank you. So as the Chair of the Ordinance Review Committee, I wanted to make an announcement about our next two upcoming meetings. So for the Ordinance Review Committee meeting, oh, sorry, Ordinance Review Committee, we are a temporary committee that only lasts until the end of the year. And we, our job is to basically review ordinances that the members of the public have brought to us with suggestions for changes that they think need to happen. So basically, we've been spending the past couple months scheduling hearings from the public and scheduling our meetings for the reviews of the ordinances that we have coming up. So the next one is going to be on Wednesday, October 8th. And that will be a review of the SIGN ordinance. And the time for that will be, to be determined, it should be around 6:00, 6:30 or 7:00, something like that. And then the next meeting after that will be Wednesday, October 22nd. And that's where we will be talking about the snow removal ordinance, which a lot of people have heard me talk about over the years. And so I'm looking forward to that meeting to review the snow ordinance. So just wanted to just mention that. Thanks.
Thank you. I want to remind everyone that due to Yom Kippur, our first council meeting in October is moved to Tuesday, September 30th. Counselor Rothenberg.
Yes, I'll make this announcement at the next meeting as well, which is that I want to just respond to Noaz's question about why I abstained. I don't want to do it right here in the announcement, because I don't want to miss anybody who really wanted to hear it that wasn't here. I'll be at the JVP Shabbat tomorrow, if you know where that is, we can talk about it there. I will talk about it when we debate this resolution. And I'm happy to tell anybody and everybody, I'll try to tell that everywhere that I can, the story of how I made that biggest, and really only that I can think of mistake of my time here as a counselor. And hopefully, that story can serve as an example that might help other people. But I'll just tell you very briefly in one sentence, the crux of it is that I gave too much weight to the concept of divisiveness. And it took me time in this office doing work that I know a lot about, where the only argument that came back to us was, well, you're just being divisive. And when you know something inside and out, you're just like, well, you think that's BS. Or you say, even if that's true for you, you're uncomfortable with something. We have to set that aside, because it's not important as the issue that we're dealing with. And I didn't, I didn't have that experience in my life before when I became a counselor. And so what I wanted to do was see that resolution pass, and debated to get it passed, and counted votes to make sure there were enough yeses before I abstained, because I thought that my job as a representative was to preserve and make a record of what I thought my community was telling me, which was that some of them didn't like this. And when you do work like this, you have to filter out things, right? You have to filter out facts that are not true. You have to filter out disingenuous things. You have to weigh credibility. And you have to filter out things that are not relevant. And that's really what this was. This was like, you know, when a judge screws up and things get appealed because they made a bad decision, they had an error in their discretion. The error in my discretion was allowing in even a fleeting moment of concern about divisiveness. It's just not something that has place in democracy. It's really not relevant. So I regret leaving a, leaving a record of that. I'm happy those passed. And I look forward to the next one passing. We can get into it in more detail at Shabbat or anywhere else. I got office hours seven days a week. You can email, call me, Facebook, Instagram. And I want to thank everybody who came for being very, very good neighbors to people here and to people all over the globe.
Thank you. Any other announcements? Okay, that brings us to the consent agenda. There is only one item on the consent agenda, the minutes of August 21st, 2025. Are there any requests for removal? Seeing none, an entertain a motion to approve.
To approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made by Counselor Moulton and seconded by Counselor Clemmer. No discussion on the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. With the council's permission, I would like to skip ahead to the resolution. Is there any objection to that? Counselor Clemmer?
Yeah, I just want to be mindful of the department heads that are on Zoom that might be waiting to hear something. Last time we did this, it got extended by a lot. And they, you know, went into the wee hours for them. They have to work tomorrow. They will work it all day. So maybe we could just check in with them to see.
Mayor Shera?
The mayor.
So yeah, I believe there are two department heads that are on. But I think it would be fine to move the resolution first.
Okay, thank you.
Fine. Thank you.
So 25.314, a resolution calling for the City of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Israel and Palestine. And our practice is for the sponsors to take turns reading the resolution. Counselors Dubs, Moulton, and Maori, I'll turn it over to one of you. And would you like it up on the screen while it's being read?
I don't think that's necessary right now unless you would like, unless someone, another counsel would like it, perhaps. Yes. Well, thanks, thanks to everyone who came out to give us feedback and to share your very moving stories. And I'd like to thank my cosponsors, as well as some incredibly dedicated activists who did not waver over a very long period with lots of kinds of challenges put in front of them to bring this to where we are now onto the floor.
So we want to read this first.
Oh, you want to read it first?
Yeah.
Okay. That's why you wanted to put it up. I thought you wanted, you said you wanted us to comment first, and then we would read it.
Oh, no, no, sorry.
Oh, okay. Well, let's read it then. And perhaps we should put it up. I misunderstood. Stan, do you want to start for us?
Sure.
Do paragraphage.
Yes. Okay. So this is a resolution calling for the City of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Israel and Palestine. Whereas the City Council recognizes the importance of peace and justice for all communities and nations around the world, regardless of national, ethnic, or religious affiliations, and advocates for the safety, dignity, freedom, and equality of all people, and?
Whereas the City Council recognizes that all human life is precious, and recognizes the ongoing humanitarian crisis in Gaza and the West Bank in particular, and seeks to avoid economically supporting such crises through the city's financial investments.
Whereas on February 1st, 2022, Amnesty International concluded that Israel has imposed a system of oppression and domination over Palestinians wherever it exercises control over their rights, across Israel and in the occupied Palestinian territories, and that it enforces segregation in a systematic and highly institutionalized manner through laws, policies, and practices, which amounts to the international wrong of apartheid, and as a violation of human rights and international law. And?
Whereas on July 19th, 2024, the International Court of Justice ruled that Israel's occupation of Gaza, the West Bank, and East Jerusalem is illegal and must end immediately, that Israel must halt all settlement construction, evacuate settlers, pay reparations to Palestinians, and allow them the right of return, that Israel is committing racial segregation and discrimination, and that all states and international organizations have a legal obligation not to recognize or assist the occupation, and?
Whereas as of January 3rd, 2025, Northampton had an estimated 71,010 invested in companies identified by the American Friends Service Committee as complicit in substantial, ongoing, and intentional violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine based on information provided by the City Treasurer. This is not working. Yeah, thanks.
If you're too close, it comes out.
Oh, okay. Try. I'm done. I was done with that. Whereas on February 27?
Oh, that's where we are, sorry. Whereas on February 27th, 2024, the City Council passed a resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, and?
Whereas on November 7th, 2024, the City Council expressed its support for the proposed congressional joint resolution of disapproval to block the sale of more than $20 billion of offensive U.S. weapons to Israel, and called for the introduction of legislation to impose an embargo on unrestricted sales and shipment of U.S. weapons to Israel, and?
Whereas the City Council believes that the city finances should align with our values, and?
Whereas Northampton has a precedent for divesting from entities that do not align with our city's values. For example, on September 26th, 2018, the mayor issued an executive policy order enacting a policy that the city shall not contract with companies that are directly involved in the manufacture or maintenance of nuclear weapons, and shall work to eliminate and avoid any investments in companies involved in the manufacture or maintenance of nuclear weapons, and?
Whereas another example occurred on July 22nd, 2013, when the City Council passed a resolution urging the city to divest from fossil fuel companies and adopt policies precluding new investments in fossil fuel companies.
Yeah, okay.
You're on the therefore be it resolved.
Yeah. I think I have, there's a two, there's two different things. Therefore, be it resolved, the City Council urges the City Treasurer and the City Retirement Board to divest from and refrain from future investments in companies with substantial, ongoing, and intentional complicity in violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine, including their involvement in the settlement industry, exploitation of natural resources, walls and checkpoints, weapons and military equipment, and discrimination consistent with the American Friends Service Committee's investigative human rights rating system, and?
Be it further resolved that the City Council urges the City Treasurer and the City Retirement Board to refrain from making investments in the Israeli military in the form of Israel bonds, and?
Be it further resolved that the City Council urges the City Treasurer and the Retirement Board to divest from any assets included in the above clauses within two years, and?
Be it further resolved that the City Council urges the City Treasurer and the Retirement Board contact their respective investment advisors to request that they notify fund managers of the city's desire to remove companies with a substantial, ongoing, and intentional complicity in violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine as set out above, from all investment products, and?
Be it further resolved that the Clerk of the City Council will send this resolution to Northampton Mayor Gina Louise Shera, Northampton City Treasurer Christine Buzell, Northampton Retirement Board Chair, Charlie Nardi, sorry, State Representative Lindsay Sabadosa, State Senator Joe Comerford, Congressman Jim McGovern, U.S. Senator Elizabeth Warren, U.S. Senator Ed Markey, Governor Maury Healy, and Treasurer Deborah Goldberg of the Commonwealth.
Thank you. Sponsors. Would one of you like to speak first?
Oh, well, I'll just continue praising the, our community, because it was not easy. And it took a lot of fortitude to continue, and a lot of research. There's a lot of nuance here, and I'm very grateful. And frankly, it just can't get done in a small city without committed folks like you. So, you know, it's my feeling that in the face of devastating state violence, that we have a responsibility to act. And we also need to see this as an opportunity to do something. We, I would, I would love to have world leaders be, you know, figuring out a political solution. They are failing us. Yeah, I don't know.
Just be a little further.
Yeah, but then it goes off. Okay. So, so what, that is the answer to local. First of all, we have, you know, state and local governments have over $4 trillion in investments in entities that we've named. At least 1.6 billion of that is really bonds. And this is public money. This money comes from residents, from our families, our neighbors, our businesses. This, where we put our money is not neutral, and this is up to us. We are the stewards of, we are all the stewards of human rights. We are all the stewards of the world's children. And the reason, the thing about divestment is, the pushback we get from it is because it's impactful. And it's also nonviolent, legal, and it's a tool to actually urge and actually give an opportunity to these offending industries to self-correct. And if they do so, you know, then they will, they will not be on that list. And so this is a way to urge them to do the right thing. And there are, there's, it's overwhelming, the amount of, you know, human rights violations happening constantly in our world. But we need specificity and focus to have the most impact. And we are all, as Americans, we are, we are supporting this, this devastating systematic oppression. oppression of a people. It's, so, so I feel we have a, you know, specific responsibility as, as people who live in this country. This is not a blanket boycott. This targets corporations and industry. This is not a burden to fall on everyday people in Israel. This is about saving, saving us all from the, from what is happening, and, you know, and the precedent is setting for all of us. This is an action we can all take together, and when we look back on this, which I hope we do because it's over, what do we want to feel we did?
Thank you. Counselor Dubs.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor Mayori, for what, for your beautiful statements that you just made. And also thank you, Counselor Moulton, both of you, for co-sponsoring this resolution. And I also want to really thank the people who have led the way. You guys have just, you've been leading the way from the beginning, and I just really want to thank you. And I want to, going all the way back to the ceasefire resolution, and then to the arms embargo resolution, I, I basically, you know, I, I'm here on the council, and I feel like it is my duty here, because I'm in this position, to be a voice for the community, and, and it really is you all who have been, like, leading me this whole time to know what the right thing to do is as a counselor. And so I, so I am so grateful, and I think we all need to do what we can in our position that we have, and so that's what we're here to do. We need to take action against genocide, and it just, we need, we need to do this to be on the right side of history. And, and so I, I want to stress that this is a local issue. It concerns our government funds and how we allocate them, and so it is very much within the purview of the City Council to do this, and there is precedent. This invest, this resolution is based on, it's a previous resolution that we worked on, sorry, and the, the resolution is based on the 2013 Northampton City Council Resolution calling for a divestment from fossil fuel companies. This resolution prompted an executive policy order by the mayor, which enshrined fossil fuel divestment in the city's financial policy manual. So we, we, we have done this before. We, we've spoken out about issues before that are, that are national issues, and so I think that's, another point I would like to make is, is that, you know, a lot of critics of this have asked the question about why, if we're here in Northampton, why are we talking about something that's so many thousands of miles away from us on the other, in another part of the world? And I would just ask the question, and this is a question, it's, it might be a disturbing question, but I just would ask, what would we do if there were genocide happening here in America? We have, we know for a fact that we are seeing everyday threats from our federal government, and I say that personally as a disabled person, a vulnerable member of, of our society who constantly sees threats from our federal government, and what if there were genocide happening here right in America? What would we want, what would we do about it? Wouldn't we want people all over the world speaking up for us? People thousands of miles away? We would want them to speak up for us, and so that's what we're doing. Northampton is known for protecting our citizens, our vulnerable citizens, like immigrants and the LGBT community, disabled people, so I believe that this is continuing in the tradition of protecting our most vulnerable. So I'm just very grateful to be a part of this and very supportive, and I, I've, since I, from, from the perspective of someone who has, was involved in the other resolutions, I, I, it's very heartening to see how much more support there is now, and how it's, it feels like it's becoming easier for everyone to be able to speak up about this, and I think it's just really important, so, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moulton.
Thank you. First, I want to thank everyone who spoke out tonight about the resolution here in council chambers and online, and those who came out and didn't get a chance to speak, but were, were here in, with us, and I know that this, the emotions that I heard really underscore for me the importance of doing this work on this resolution. Thank you to the, to Counselors Mayori and Dubs for your work on the resolution and your remarks, and particularly want to thank the activists, the organizers who are, who are here and who were here for keeping this on our radar for so many months, and really probably would not be here tonight discussing this without your, your work, so thank you. In February of 2024, I was a cosponsor of the resolution calling for a ceasefire in Gaza, and I was one of eight affirmative votes on this council that ratified that resolution. In November of 2024, I was one of five affirmative votes on the council that ratified a resolution supporting federal legislation to impose an embargo on unrestricted sales and shipment of U.S. weapons to Israel. I believe that we have a moral imperative as leaders in the community to continue responding to the violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine. And the next, for me, the next meaningful step for the city to take is to divest its investments from any companies complicit in those violations. The current investment by Northampton in, in five offending companies that have been identified by the American Friends Service Committee is about $71,000, which is roughly six tenths of 1% of the city's total investment. While that's a relatively small amount of money, I believe any amount diverges from the city's humanitarian values. We, the sponsors recognize that there are complexities in disentangling these indirect investments from the offending companies, and because of that, the resolution establishes a two-year period for the implementation process. Similarly, there was a lengthy implementation period established by the 2013 resolution that Counselor Dubs mentioned, calling for divestment from fossil fuel companies. Just as importantly as divesting the current investments, the resolution calls for municipal officials to notify its investment advisors of our desire to avoid future investments in companies that have a substantial, ongoing, and intentional complicity in violations of international law and human rights in Israel and Palestine. And that is not tied to a static list, but importantly for me, it is tied to a, this, this list that is constantly being updated by the Economic Activism Program of the American Friends Service Committee, which is dedicated to exposing corporate involvement in oppressive state violence and promoting corporate standards for social responsibility. What that means is that if there is a change in behavior by some of the corporations that are currently on the AFSC list, that they could be removed in the future. So for all those reasons, I am proud to be a sponsor of this resolution, and I urge my fellow counselors to support the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Other counselors. Counselor Lavarche. If you turn your microphone on.
About that too. Okay. Here we go. I want to thank Rachel Maleri, Jeremy Dugson, Stan Moulton for designing this ordinance, and this resolution is it, number one in my books. I want to tell everybody, I received many calls from my residents in Ward 6 of talking about this resolution. And I feel, just hearing what I heard tonight, I mean, I saw somebody very emotional. I had a monthly talk with her when she came in early. It hit you right here. When I hear about women and children, of what has happened to them, it's got to stop. Definitely has to stop. I am in full support, in full support of the resolution, 25.314, and I'm calling myself as a city counselor for the City of Northampton to divest from entities complicit in human rights violations in Israel and Palestine. I feel that needs to be put in place immediately, immediately. I also want to state that even talking with some of my residents, and they live right on my street where we've talked, I find that, just not as city counselors, but I'm also feeling that the city really needs to start looking at diversing and sends a necessary message to the political leaders in the State House in Boston and to our president. No more fooling around. We need action on this. So I am supporting this 100%, and I want to thank the three sponsors for this, and I'm also asking, I really would like to see this move on, if we could do two readings on this tonight. I think it's critical.
Thank you.
Is that a motion?
I don't think so.
Make a motion?
You're making a motion to suspend the rules so that we may vote tonight?
I'll second that motion.
Motion made by Counselor Rothenberg and seconded by Counselor Dubs. We can continue the discussion. Counselor Clemmer.
Yeah, I just want to thank the sponsors, and I want to, I met with a group that was working to get this to the council, and thank you for all you've done, and for meeting with me, and working for all the time you did to bring this to the people's attention. And, I mean, does, we're a small town here, so, you know, we're not going to have hundreds of millions of dollars that we can hold back, but whatever we do, we're making a statement, and it's also, will hopefully encourage other communities to also take the stand. And I think everything's been said. I agree with what my fellow counselors have said tonight, and, and I thank the, my constituents who came to speak and who wrote letters throughout the week, and I'm in support of this resolution.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the sponsors and the community advocates. I appreciated meeting with you a few months ago, and I appreciate the research, including what, how much we have in our local investments, the resources that are available through the American Friends Service Committee to determine which companies are complicit. I really think that will make it a lot easier to determine moving forward. And yeah, the resolution and comments by the sponsors say it all, and I support it. I do want to fully understand how this action would affect our finances, since although the amount is relatively small, as I understand it, we can't just pull that portion but have to switch out a larger investment. So, and I appreciate that the resolution understands that it may, may take some time to accomplish this. And then I understand and support the focus on Israel and Palestine, but also I take a yes and approach, because I, I feel that we should also divest from any company, any companies profiting off of human rights violations anywhere, and encourage that to be added to any executive order, understanding that, you know, it, to the extent that it is feasible to determine. Thank you. Counselor Rothenberg, would you like to speak?
So I'll say what I should have said in the first time these kinds of things came around, which is that I understand, for example, in this resolution, there may still be people in our community who are uncomfortable with the word apartheid, and I'm not here to tell you whether your feelings are appropriate or not. I'm here to tell you that we have to set them aside for this. One thing that I cannot stand, and that nobody in the working class can stand, is when money is flowing to things that harm people. And it happens to us locally in small ways, right? It happens, the things I fight about here are the, the education for the kids, and the cost of rent, and the sidewalks not being accessible. And here too, when we follow the money in our city, you know, we can see who profits from those choices, why those choices are made, and that we shouldn't be doing that. This one is like the most egregious version of that, right? Oppression is a spectrum. Oppression is oppression. It doesn't like the peas.
If you move the mic a little further?
It doesn't like the peas. Oppression is a spectrum, and this is at the very far end of it, what we're talking about tonight, right? And it's strange, it's such a small amount of money coming from us, but yes, this is a global movement. We're joining Norway, we're joining Somerville, we're joining tons of cities in California, we're joining Portland, Maine. And we're second, we're second in Massachusetts, and I want to thank Eve Glazier, and Matt Spurlock, and Ella, and Deb, and Heather. And just as we set aside whether or not this is divisive to anyone still in our community, I want to acknowledge that your kindness and what you have taken on in just being who you are, just being who you are, so pure, and the work that you've put in, and what you've exposed yourself to, I'm sure you've gotten some vitriol, we had some here tonight, has also worked. Not that the divisiveness or the feelings are the most important thing to, to cure, but I am impressed because my constituents now talk about all of this differently than they did two years ago, and I know it's because you were talking to them. I don't know anybody except for the people who commented here tonight who still have any qualms, and I agree with the people who said it's way too late for us to, to be getting to that realization, but I appreciate that you did the work, and I hope that that helps us stop these things before they ever start, right? Generationally. I was really moved by the, chilled, chilled by the guy who said tonight, they're livestreaming it to see if we're okay with it. Now, of course, some of the reasons that they're livestreaming it is because it's like this time of guerrilla media, right? We're able to broadcast to each other, which is fantastic. And so as we continue to do this work and spread throughout the globe and build our global communities, I do think that we can stop this. I do think that all of us as, in our generation have grown up with this as just like a reality. War is a reality. It's a given. How do we stop it? And I think we're in a very powerful position right now of being able to connect with each other and stop it, and invest in the things that we care about. So let's abolish it. Let's abolish violence as a form of control, as a form of profit, as a form of governance. It's not what we believe in, and it's not necessary, so thank you for taking a step for us and leading us from the community.
Thank you. Counselor Mayori.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that I know we have, you know, I think this, this resolution is really a, you know, a future forward. It's a way of ensuring that our investments moving forward will not aid, you know, aid these offending companies that are committing systemic human rights violations. And so there's a mindfulness to bringing to our investments. And I hear a willingness from my, in my brief conversations with our finance director to do so. And I think there's some concern about, you know, how, how does that play out? How, you know, with this resolution about the indirect investments? But I would say that because it's a resolution and not an ordinance, that, you know, what, what would have to happen is that it would, it's really, it's an executive, it would, it would be an executive action. And that I, I think I could say that the cosponsors and the community members would work with, not, you know, against our city to try to figure that out. I just needed to say that because not everyone, you know, I've heard some people think it's an ordinance or a resolution. And in this situation, in our, in our, in our government here, this is what council can do. And we are, we are fortunate to have, you know, a responsive executive, you know, you know, folks in our executive branch who are concerned about, you know, human rights and investments as well. So that's what I want to say about that because I know there was some, you know, concerns about what could be done and how it would work. And I think that's all, that's, that's, you know, we, that's, we can talk about that. And there's a lot of very educated people. And the AFSC thankfully is a, you know, is a longstanding, respected organization that keeps their list updated. So, yeah, and if, I'm curious, you know, about if councillors have any lingering questions since there's, there's a movement to move it forward.
Yeah, I would like to ask if Mayor Shara could speak to the, the resolution and to what steps might need to be taken?
Sure, and I can just sort of give an, sort of up some updated information from the resolution as well. So first of all, I want to thank the sponsors and thank everybody who spoke tonight. So our investment firm is, is definitely attuned to our concerns about investing or not investing in certain industries and has worked to eliminate our exposure and is continuing to work. So we believe we actually can accommodate the Friends list quite easily. And, and I just want to give some updated information based on what was in the resolution, which is based on a January report. So first of all, there are no investments from the list in retirement accounts at all. And I know I heard RTX or Raytheon mentioned a couple times tonight. It is not currently on our list. Councillor Moulton, I also heard, said five companies, so that was in the January list. It's now actually down to two companies, just to update everyone. So hopefully that's actually evidence that the American Friends Service Committee list is maybe already having an impact. So I just wanted to make sure that people, you know, knew that we're actually down to two. And, and that we believe that we can really quite easily be able to move those two out and, and get that done and have very limited impact on our performance.
All right, thank you. Are there any other comments before we vote on whether to vote tonight? Councillor Rothenberg?
Yeah, and I just had a couple of questions. Do you know what, did you bring which two those are?
So I believe it's GE and the Israeli bank, one that was on the list. So the First International Bank of Israel.
Okay, and who is our investment firm?
Barth Almio.
Okay. And the figure that we had, I just wanted to add a comment from the January time. Well, actually Eve, yeah, January 2025. It's just zero, when it was the five, it's just 0.62%. So there would be no financial reason not to get this done, and I'm glad to hear we're doing it. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, let's move to a vote on whether we're going to vote tonight?
I just want to clarify the, the companies that are, the two that remain, First International Bank of Israel and the other that you mentioned?
General Electric.
General Electric, okay, so that means that off the list that was as of January 3rd, 2025 are Heidelberg, Primo Water and Raytheon. Okay, is that, is that?
I would have to check, I know the, the two that remain. So if those were the other three that were on the, I don't have the January list for me, but.
Thank you.
Yeah. Okay, all in favor of suspending the rules so that we may vote tonight, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, we may vote tonight, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
Move to approve?
Second it.
Motion made by councillor Mayory and seconded by councillor Moulton. Any further discussion?
Oh, one more comment. Let's keep working on the L3 issue. Give me a call.
Okay, although we could do a voice vote, let's do a roll call.
Councillor Dubs?
Yes.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Clemmer?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayory?
Yes.
Councillor Moulton?
Yes.
And councillor Rothenberg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Thanks, everyone. All right, we're going to skip back up in the agenda and go to our one financial order. So this is 25.318, "In order to appropriate fiscal year 2026 CPA funds for community preservation purposes." And would, is, do we have Sarah LaValley here or anyone from? Yes, okay, I think we need to make Sarah a co-host. And I asked her to unmute in the meantime while that's happening, so. Okay, there we go. Okay, welcome, Sarah.
Welcome, thank you. So this is a standard order that the city council considers every fiscal year. And this is necessary both to set the tax rate and to allow anticipated fiscal year 26 CPA revenue to be spent on, on projects in the two upcoming rounds. So I did provide an explanatory document that gives some additional information about how these numbers came to be, but I'm happy to go into more detail about any of them if anyone has any questions or would like more information.
Thank you. Are there any questions from councillors? Those of us who were, well, we were all here last year and we did this at the same time of year then. I just have the question of, you know, are the, let's see, let me, oh yeah, are we still about evenly split in the four categories of CPA funding?
We're on it. So it does fluctuate from funding round to funding round and from fiscal year to fiscal year depending on the, the timing of projects and when especially affordable housing projects are coming to us from affordable housing developers, because those are often large chunks of money all in, all at once. And there may be several year gap in between. So right now we're at 24.9% and this is over the life of the CPA since spring 2005, 2005 up until the end of fiscal year 2025. 24.9% has been allocated to historic preservation, 22.9% to affordable housing, 24% to open space, and 28.3% to recreation.
Thank you. And I know very recently it was more in affordable housing, and I imagine it will be again soon as we get more of those large grants, as you said. Any questions for Sarah? All right, then we need to decide whether to refer this to Finance or to the consent agenda of our next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by councillor Labarge and seconded by councillor Clemmer to move this to the consent agenda of our next meeting. Discussion?
Just to say that, you know, every year we, when we, this comes, I'm sorry, did you want to?
Go ahead.
Tell me I could speak? Because there is a committee that reviews these, I feel comfortable with it going to the consent agenda and not going to Finance. Every once in a while, if there's something that, you know, it's a large amount or kind of a more, you know, controversial project, we do unpack it at Finance. But they do, you know, a pretty thorough job at the committee. So that's why I'm comfortable with it going to the consent agenda.
And this isn't spending any money. It's just moving the money into the appropriate buckets and getting ready for them to make their recommendations to us. And then, of course, we, we have the final say in what gets funded.
Yeah, good point.
And a funding round will just be starting with applications due, actually on Monday. So the committee will be starting its work to review those through the fall.
Great, thank you. All in favor of sending this to the consent agenda of our next meeting, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes unanimously and will be on the consent agenda of our next meeting. Next, we have two orders. They are for exemptions. One is an order to approve an exemption for Mary Ann McKenna, contract for Personnel Services. That's 25.316. And 25.317, an order to approve an exemption for Mia Scouran, contract for Personnel Services. And Mayor Shara, do you want, would you just give an overview of why we have these orders on the agenda? And what they're trying, what their, the Parks and Recreation is trying to accomplish?
Sure, so we've done this before. So both of these individuals, I believe, are substitute teachers. And also we want them to be able to participate in these Parks and Rec programs. So we need to do an exemption to allow them to hold both of those positions.
And two readings are requested so that the hiring could progress. And any, any further questions? I would entertain a motion to suspend rules?
Yeah, that, move to suspend the rules.
Motion made by councillor Mayory and seconded by councillor Labarge to suspend the rules. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Rules have been suspended. I would entertain a motion, and I'm sorry, I was taking these as a group. So I, that's what I intended for, suspending the rules as a group. And I would entertain a motion to approve these as a group.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Moulton and seconded by councillor Labarge. Any discussion on approval? And are we able to do a voice vote on these orders? Okay, so all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Those two pass unanimously. Brings us to 25.319, "In order laying out and accepting Main Street and portions of West Street, et cetera, and authorizing acquisition of easements for such layout and acceptance." So this is technically in first reading because we did not have the actual order language when it was before us on August 21st. That's when we had the petition for layout and acceptance of Main Street. But that was, that petition was sent to City Services and also the Planning Board. And the Planning Board recommended acceptance. At the street layout public hearing, no interested person objected. And that was, and they received a positive recommendation from the City Services Committee. So it is now here before us. And do we have, is Director Mish who's here to speak to this item?
Yeah, I believe Director Mish is there. While, while you're looking for, I just, I'm sure this has been said in the other meetings, but this is something, one, we need a layout of Main Street. And this is something that we expected Mastod to have. And we've been sort of going back and forth for a while with them looking for it. And they cannot find it, so therefore we must, we must create this.
Great. Director Mish, would you like to introduce or describe anything about this?
No, I think though, I think the mayor said it perfectly. You know, this is just laying it out officially as it existed for the last 150 years or so. But it's in plan, it's got all the boundaries, so nothing is changing. But it's really sort of setting the foundation so that it's all on record and meets Mastod standard.
Right, and there is, it is listed as an order of taking, but there's no compensation being paid because these, this way has been in existence. There's a right for all to pass for hundreds of years.
Correct.
Any questions? I would entertain a motion to suspend rules so we may vote tonight?
Move to suspend.
Motion made by councillor Moulton and seconded by councillor Labarge. Any discussion on suspension of rules? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
No.
So that is, wait, one, two, three, four, five, six, yeses and one no. Motion passes. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made by councillor Labarge and seconded by councillor Clemmer to approve. Discussion? Okay, seeing none? Is this, can this order also be done by voice? Let's do a roll call. Okay, roll call please on approval of 25.319.
Councillor Jarrett?
Yes.
Councillor Clemmer?
Yes.
Councillor Labarge?
Yes.
Councillor Mayory?
Yes.
Councillor Moulton?
Yes.
Councillor Rothenberg?
No.
Councillor Dubs?
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes with six yes votes and one no. Brings us to 25.315, "An ordinance," and this is the last item on the agenda, 25.315, "An ordinance permitting residential conversion of existing non-conforming historic accessory structures." That is quite a mouthful. And I'm going to read the, so this is a zoning ordinance that is in first reading, so it is a referral. And I am going to read the wherases, which should, and then briefly describe the, the intent of the ordinance. So upon the recommendation of councillor Marissa Elkins, who could not be here tonight, and councillor Alex Jarrett, "Whereas, preservation of existing historic structures is an established goal of our Sustainable Northampton Plan. Whereas accessory structures such as carriage houses, barns, and other residential outbuildings yield critical information about the city's history of travel, neighborhood development, and everyday life, but are a vulnerable, at-risk resource. And whereas these structures require significant time and money to maintain, and allowing an additional use that brings in revenue for the owner makes them more likely to be preserved. And, whereas structures allowed to deteriorate because they have no viable use for the property owner pose a health and safety hazard to the community. And, whereas redevelopment of these structures in primarily residential zoning districts for residential use is consistent with the Sustainable Northampton Plan goal of quote, encouraging infill development of vacant and underutilized land in and around downtown and in existing denser developed areas. It promotes a compact development pattern which lowers the per household carbon footprint and allows for more walkable, cycleable, and public transit accessible neighborhoods. And whereas reusing an existing building structure reduces the disturbance required for construction, saving existing trees in some cases. And whereas many of these structures have been built out as studios or other non-residential spaces, making it an economical choice to convert them to residential use. And whereas Western Massachusetts, like the rest of the nation, is grappling with a housing crisis caused by the one-two punch of limited housing supply and increasing unaffordability. And whereas flexibility in parking requirements is necessary as these historic structures are already in place, limiting the options for additional parking spaces." And then there are two sections. One amends the table of use and dimensional And then, there are two sections. One, amends the Table of Use and Dimensional Regulations for these districts, URA, URB, URC, Suburban Residential, Rural Residential, and Water Supply Protection. And so, it allows for, right now, of course, if you have a historic structure and it is within the setbacks for residential use, you can convert it to, to residential. But if it is not, and many of these are slightly into the setbacks, a lot way, sometimes right by the property line, then you are not permitted to convert it to residential use. You are able to have a studio, you are able to have many other uses, but this would allow these to be converted, and there are some limitations set out in, in the ordinance. One is, 70% of the accessory structure must have been built before 1976, the, the date of, if considered historic, we followed the, the Historical Commission and the Sustainable Northampton Plan, and so that, that means that the, if you have expanded it considerably, then it's no longer a primarily historical structure, and so, that is one of the conditions. The character-defining features shall be preserved to the extent feasible, and there's some others around height, making sure that everything is properly inspected. It allows for a, not adding parking if it's under 1,000 square feet, but it does require the addition of parking if it's over 1,000 square feet. And there, it continues to be governed by the standard rules around dimensional and density standards. So, just, you know, we'll go, this will be, go to a public hearing if the council sees fit to refer it, and essentially, you know, this is, there's a dual purpose here. It is historic preservation and adding housing, reducing demolition, reducing tree removal. There are about 900 of these structures in the applicable zoning districts, and all the building codes, fire codes, need to be followed, which actually may limit some of them because of, if they're too close to another structure, the building and fire codes come first. So, I will go ahead and make a motion, then we can have our full discussion, as much as we would like, to refer this to the Historical Commission, the Housing Partnership, Legislative Matters, and the Planning Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, a motion made by Councilor Jarrett and seconded by Councilor Mayori. Yeah, so, love to hear councilors' thoughts, initial thoughts, as we begin the process. Councilor Mayori?
Yeah, this is quite kind of clever, and I'm impressed. I'm curious how this got on your radar, or how you were inspired to do this. Was there, you know, is it kind of a problem that has been discussed, or is it very specific to Northampton? I'm sure it's pretty specific to the Northeast and our old housing, you know, stock, but yeah, I'm curious.
Yeah, so I've, I have constituents that have been writing to me for years saying, "I have this carriage house, but it is, you know, instead of being the required 15 feet, it's 11 feet, you know, from the property line," and there's nothing they can do short of connecting their house physically, like making an extension onto their house that then connects to this building. And there's various situations like that all around the city, and, you know, these, these are situations where people want to rent, they want to have their family members live in already existing structures, and in many cases are already converted to some extent. So, allowing more options and recognizing that, you know, when you already own a house and a lot, that it's cheaper to, to build or convert on that lot rather than having to, because you don't have to pay for the cost of the lot again. So, this can result in, in cheaper housing.
Just to add the, the pollution of demolition, it's kind of, I was surprised to learn how, you know, polluting, demolishing buildings, to have to rebuild them can be. I think I learned that from you.
Councilor Rothenberg?
Where are we on, like, our processes for being able to restrict things from becoming Airbnbs?
So, we've opted into the tax on Airbnbs, but we don't have a, and I'm not sure of our ability, and I want, I don't know if, I know Director Mish is still with us, of our ability to regulate in terms of restriction, and that would be great to know. Because it is certainly one of the, that so many apartments around the city are used as Airbnbs and have been taken off the market and directly contribute to the rise in rents. Director Mish?
Yeah, I mean, we, the council previously approved, you know, as sort of a initial step, approved short-term rentals, and that, the council can certainly pass an ordinance not to, you know, to prohibit short-term rentals, so anything that's sort of less than 30 days of a time. But as you said, there's, we do have a system for, for taxing those, those units currently, and that funding has gone in to support affordable housing, the creation of affordable housing. So, we, you know, directly linking the money that comes from the short-term rental taxes to that.
And would it be an all or nothing, or would, would the council have the option to say X number or in certain districts, or?
Um, yes, you, I mean, yes, there are a number of ways to address it in certain districts. It all comes down to enforcement, and, and it's very, you know, it's, it, sort of the more detailed and nuanced it is, the harder it is to enforce or to, you know, because things could, there may be ways around knowing that some of these are being rented, and so it's always going to come down to enforcement and the ability to enforce.
And Councilor Rothenberg, you have a follow-up question?
Yeah, I just have two follow-up questions. One, could that just be put into this, that this would not be able to be used that way? And two, what, can you expand on how much we're bringing in in taxes and how that's going to affordable housing?
So, it's, it's always on the, on our quarterly reports, and I just want to say, so this is actually a fee, not a tax, because we keep using tax, but it's actually a short-term rental fee, which is what's allowed by the state.
Okay. Thank you, and.
Sorry about that.
Who would, Director Mish or Mayor Shara, would you like to answer the question of the, and I know these orders have come before us and we voted on them, of where, where that money has gone specifically?
Well, I can tell you, the most recent case was, and, you know, these fees don't, they add up over time, and of course, affordable housing, the cost per unit is very high, so we can't, so it's really used as leveraging money. So, the last allocation was given to, allocated to Valley CDC for the 737 Bridge Road project. And so, it takes a while to collect enough to be, you know, to be substant, substantive enough to support housing, because the cost of housing construction is so high.
Thank you. Council, Mayor Shara?
So, I, we just, thank you, Ellen. For FY25, the total of the local option was $52,184. So, if you add that to the estimated sales tax that goes with it, it was 1.74 million.
Sorry, 1.74 million was, was the?
FY25 for a short-term rental.
That, that's the total of?
That's the local option, which is 3%, plus the estimated sales tax, which is 5.7%. So, the local option was 52,184.
Okay. Can you turn your microphone on?
Does that, that whole amount go to affordable housing, or just the 52? Carolyn, do you have that answer?
Well, um, we, so the order, the council order originally said that the money could be applied to support affordable housing. We don't, I think it's just that amount, I have to go back and look at the, how it's been divided before, I don't have that in front of me. I, I think it's just the fee portion.
Yeah, what, the 1.7 million is the total of short-term rental fees that are charged in Northampton on a yearly basis. I mean, because, because we get 3% of that, and that's the maximum that the state allows us to, to get. So, I hope that clarifies. Councilor Clemmer?
I support this resolution. I think anything we can do to increase housing for people is, we need to do, you know, we need to take advantage of it, and all these 900 places are sitting there, not that we're going to convert all of them, but, you know, that's, that's a lot of families or people that this could give homes to, and, um, I was going to say, um, and people, you know, many people here are, want to age in place, and this would be a good opportunity for either them to move into their carriage house and have their family living in the home, or have a caretaker living on the premises and not in their home. So, I, I think it would help a lot of the residents too, who, who of course want to stay in their homes, they don't want to, you know, leave after they've been there for 50, 60 years. And so, yeah, I think this is a great resolution, and I want to thank you and Councilor Elkins for writing it, and, yeah, there was something else, but, no, come back to me.
Thank you. Councilor Moulton?
Yes, thank you, Council President, for bringing this forward, and Councilor Elkins in absentia. There are two important guardrails that I see that I want to mention. One is section, subsection A, which, if this ordinance is adopted, that would establish a date after which the non-conforming footprint for residential uses couldn't, could not be expanded. And then, the other one is actually the last subsection G that, that states that this would not over, override the current dimensional and density standards for each zoning district. So, that, that, the density is not going to change as a result of this.
Thank you. Any councilors who haven't spoken? Okay, well, I encourage everyone to attend the public hearing and the meetings of the Housing Partnership and the Historical Commission, and we can look at any changes that might be, folks might be interested, and to spread the word about the ordinance as well. Councilor Rothenberg?
Yeah, I hope that the bodies that are looking at this will look at adding stronger language for affordability and ensuring accessibility. I don't think, I, I think there's a lot of loopholes. I don't feel like there's a lot of guardrails here, but I look forward to seeing what the other committees come up with to add to this. I would encourage them to be creative and be strong.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor of referral to the Historical Commission, the Housing Partnership, Legislative Matters, and the Planning Board, say aye?
Aye.
And any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, I know the Historical Commission will take that up on the 29th. I would expect the Housing Partnership on October 6th, and then the hearing and such would be scheduled sometime in October. Okay, that's it. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Councilor LeBarge and seconded by Councilor Clemmer. All in favor of adjournment, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay, we are adjourned.